Also, short term, I mean, what I've been told in the past is that if this passes and everyone switches to the defined contribution plan, that the taxpayers are liable for everyone who is currently retired or still in the old plan, and that there will be no one contributing, new people coming in. So taxpayers will then have to step in and add additional amounts, we've got to find it somewhere, to continue to pay that till the liability goes down.
Mayor and Councilwoman.
I'm trying to figure out where all these savings are immediately.
No, I think it's an incredibly important question, and it's one of the most difficult things to understand about pensions. The way that pensions are supposed to work is that every year, the city calculates, the cities actuaries calculate what are the benefits that have been earned, and the city is supposed to set aside a certain amount of money that, in addition to assuming a rate of return, is going to equal all of those benefits. So, all the way up until 2012, the way that the city's pension system was supposed to work was, each year, the city is setting aside enough money for all of the benefits that were earned in that year. Future workers are not supposed to pay for previous workers. Pension systems don't work exactly like social security. They're supposed to be pre-funded, so that by the time that everybody retires, there's enough money in the system, also assuming a rate of return, to be able to pay out all of those benefits. So if there were to be a switch into 401K, if there were some kind of defined contribution system, the city would have to pay the unfunded liabilities for what's currently in the tier one. But they shouldn't have to add in any additional amounts beyond the unfunded liability, because the way that the calculation is supposed to work is that the unfunded liability plus all of the other assets that are in the fund equals, assuming the rate of return, the amount of benefits that have to get paid out. So the unfunded liability is a problem that has to be addressed, but there won't be any additional liabilities added, simply because you've created a defined contribution system for new employees.
Don't mean to say that it's going to be additional. I think there are liabilities that are going to have to be assumed, is what I guess is what I'm trying to say. And a lot of it has to do, I believe, with the rate of return, if I understand this correctly. So I am concerned that we will be paying to more funds, and the taxpayers are going to have, it's going to be additional funding somewhere. It has to come from somewhere, and I don't want to ever have to raise taxes to fight for this, but I'm not sure how we find a solution to the whole thing.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilwoman, can I ask an additional question, although we're, I think Councilman Gates on the phone, and Councilman Nikowsky, I believe, is going to be on the phone, so if we're going to take an action, he's got the opportunity to take action, we're going to have to move this along. I do want to say, though, there was a six o'clock Planning Commission meeting scheduled for this room. If you're here for the Planning Commission meeting, that has now been moved to the Assembly Room on the ground floor of City Hall, although you are more than welcome to stay for this scintillating discussion, actuarial analysis of pensions, if you would like. Councilman DeCecio.
On the question of pension spiking, I just want to make sure we bring some clarity on all of this. The employees, the current employees were capped. That doesn't mean that pension spiking stopped 100 percent. It was gone with City of Phoenix employees' COPERS. Is that correct? It was just capped.
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, we implemented a snapshot for vacation and sick leave, so any vacation and sick leave earned for current employees, earned past that date, would not be, any vacations that go to payouts would not be considered pension-eligible. And we removed from the calculation several other payments that are made for allowances.
New forms and stuff like that.
Right.
But pension spiking is snapshot cap, whatever language you want to use, is still going on here at the City of Phoenix.
When these changes were approved, we did not go back and deal with already accrued vacation and sick leave that people had earned under the prior.
Yeah, the answer is yes. It's still going on here at the City of Phoenix. So that's one of the misnomers that everybody seems to have, and it just, I mean, I even read the seditorials, it's pension spiking stopped, it didn't stop. It just got capped. It got a snapshot. The other part, too, going to Councilwoman Williams's discussion about whether they're savings or not, and if Anthony's still here, it looks like they left already, but the analysis that they provided, at least that I saw, shows that if, you know, and when I asked the group why, you know, what else was left off the table, I never got a clear answer. I mean, what else was not included in this thing? When they took out the deferred compensation part, and they took out maybe other items, then of course you're going to have a loss, because they're not going to include everything. So when you include those back in, their analysis came in that the City of Phoenix is saving hundreds of millions of dollars. So it's whether or not you want to include the real numbers in it or not, and who's directing you to take things out and not take, put things in. That's really what this debate is about. So if you look at the analysis that was done, that includes everything in the initiative, then of course you're going to see a significant savings, and it's going to be happening pretty quick, too.
All right. Thank you very much, Jason Stokes. You just by testimony as I'm good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. My name's Jason Stokes. I'm a resident of District Two. I'm also Chief Representative for Aspetia. I just came out tonight to oppose items A and B. The city worked long and hard on the pension reform that went to the voters and was overwhelmingly approved. We're very careful in that. We were accused several times by some members of this panel of taking too long to take action. However, the action that we take, we took, has so far withstood litigation in the reform, unlike the state, where they did take actions more quickly, and they ultimately had to reach back into their budgets and give back money to people that they illegally took money from. What has happened in the City of Phoenix is, that has not occurred. When the speakers come out here and talk, I hadn't heard about Utah, I hadn't heard about the senator, so I just did a quick little Google, and you can actually find his publication for sale on alec.org. And so if that gives you a little mindset of where this agenda is coming from, we need to make sure that we have reform that works and does not gamble with the city's future. That same publication lists Michigan and Alaska as success stories. It's there, you can see it, it can be emailed to you. I don't want to gamble with our future. I'm a native of Phoenix, my family's here, and this is not the right place for politics. We knew we couldn't turn this boat on a dime. When we passed the reform, it was going to take a while. Until we get there, there's a window of opportunity for some politicians to scream gloom and doom. The moment we get there, that window's gone. So you will see these things grow as the time goes by. We had a vote on the 401K. We had a candidate for mayor that ran on a 401K. He did not win. Overwhelmingly, Mayor Stanton won. So urging the members of the council and the mayor to support the changes that they've already made, and dissuade you away from A and B. Thank you.
Mayor, just a comment to.
Thank you very much, and so that is the end of the cards that we have, so now would be the time to turn to council for questions or comments. Obviously, we're not voting on the initiative here today. We're not actually voting on anything, adding anything to the ballot. The only thing we would be looking for direction for is, of the options or another option, do we want to ask staff to do further analysis, potentially come back with language? Councilman.
Mayor, just a quick comment on that last, and I'll reserve comments later, but I don't think anyone was more shocked that we're having this discussion than me either. I mean, here it is, all of a sudden, it just came out of nowhere, and it wasn't listed anywhere, it wasn't proven anywhere on any council agendas, in the, you know, usually you see what's going to be projected out. I think Councilman Waring brought this up to some members of the media, where it's usually put it out there, you know, you have the list, and it goes out, you know, months, and it tells you what's going to be on the agenda, then all of a sudden, we have Buck Consultants come in, Cherry on in here, and all of a sudden, we're here today talking about this. I mean, it is unbelievable what occurs here at City Hall. I mean, it's shocking to me that how these things are so contrived, how it's put together, how things are left out, we're not even told these things are left out of their discussions. I asked them specifically, what was left out? They haven't answered me. You know, can you answer me? What else is left out? What else were you told, and by whom were you told, to leave out this information? Just tell us. Buck, tell us. Not you, Rick, I want Buck to tell us.
They didn't do the analysis.
Well, no, but they did, well, who did the analysis?
Actually, the question really is, is about the economic analysis, about the cost of the proposed initiative. Certain assumptions were made, and.
What was left out of this discussion?
Who, you know.
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, I think two very important things that were left out in your term, and I'll let Rick add to those. Number one, we did not assume that contracts that are in place were contravened, so we have contracts with deferred compensation plans in them. We assumed that that compensation would continue in some fashion, although there is an opportunity in two years for the council to act on that. The second thing is that we did not assume taking away benefits from existing employees that are currently in place. So we did not assume that a five-year average salary would apply to existing employees based on, as Mr. Neymar said, unresolved legal questions, and anything else of that nature that would be assumed for existing employees, we did not include because of the unresolved legal questions. And Rick, I don't know if there are other things.
And Mayor, may I follow up on that, though, too?
I think the city manager asked Mr. Mayor to comment on it as well, but then I'll turn back.
Mr. Zirker described it exactly right, and again, those instructions were given to Chiron, who is the actuary for the pension board by the pension board. And when I made sure that you were aware of Chiron's analysis being available, I specifically mentioned those two issues to each and every one of you.
You did that, Rick. That is correct. And that's what was shocking to me back then, too. So, and let me ask you then, too, when you made the assumptions before from the last analysis, some of those were already benefits in place, especially the spiking part of it that was capped, why was that assumed, that there was going to be a savings on that then? When you made that presentation from the last proposal.
Mayor, members of the council, when, first of all, you asked us to analyze those specific things. We were analyzing things that you asked us to analyze, and so we did. The difference is, we were analyzing an initiative and trying to provide accurate information as to what the actual impact would be for the City of Phoenix and for the COPERS system. You may disagree with those assumptions, and that's okay, that doesn't bother me, but we tried to be as accurate as possible in knowing what actually could be implemented and how it could be implemented. In terms of why we did some things before, you know, when we went into the sick leave snapshot, we did not anticipate that we would be in litigation on that, and we still are in litigation on the sick leave snapshot. We're trying now to do as much as possible, as these gentlemen said, to avoid litigation. Litigation is very costly for the city, prevents you from implementing things that you otherwise might want to implement, and if you do implement them, you may have to, as the state did, go back and pay back with interest what you took away from existing people. So our best judgment, given legal advice, and the COPERS Board also got legal advice on this, that you have also received, is that we want to do whatever possible to avoid that kind of litigation. And so that's why we analyzed it in that way and constructed packages today that mostly avoid that.
But wouldn't it be fair for the public and everybody else, I mean, you're using taxpayer money to do all this stuff. The taxpayers are the ones that should be making this determination. Why not provide them all the, I mean, what would be the fair thing to do here is for, send the consultants back, have them look at the analysis that the initiative group did, and then do their own analysis on it, and use everything that's in there, and then we can make the determination of what should and shouldn't be in there, and then compare all three plans. That would be the fair thing to do and the right thing to do. Keeping information out doesn't do anyone any diser, it does the public a disservice, and like Councilman Waring, or Vice Mayor Waring said, it totally opens you up to, you know, this type of debate here, and especially if you prevent the public from having this kind of information, which they should have. They should have all of it, and then let them make the determination. Making it for the individual that lives at 40th Street and Camelback, making that determination for them, is very patronizing. Let the public make the determination on their own, when they're given fair information from all sides. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Other members of the council, let's see, I'll go to Councilwoman Gago, and then go to the Vice Mayor. Please, Councilwoman.
I am glad that the COPERS Board did not decide to make a multimillion-dollar cut in compensation for our employee. That is not their job. That is our job if we chose to do it, but I don't believe that the people up here want to break that commitment to employees. I think there are many people here who found the budget process difficult and who are working to move forward, but if we did, if we agreed to this large compensation, the compensation package, and then said deferred compensation is off the table, that would be a cut in compensation, and many of us have made statements that that's not something we're looking to do. So I think it's not hiding information from the public unless council members have changed their minds and do want to cut compensation of employees, but right now, the direction from the council has been that we support the MOUs that we have, and so unless council members want to change that direction, what the COPERS Board seems consistent with what we've been telling them.
All right, thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Did you have a follow-up? I apologize. Okay, Vice Mayor.
Can I just ask a fundamental question? Rick, you and I met in my office maybe a month and a half ago, I can't remember how long, but something like that. I might have been your first meeting, I don't remember, because I know I talked to other people who were unaware, at least I think Sal, maybe, and maybe Bill, were unaware at the time that this was percolating. I'm just curious, why now? Why wouldn't it, if these ideas are so great, Plan A and Plan B, why weren't they included in the package in 2013? Why haven't they been discussed before? I mean, what's the magic about now? And we're trying to do this a little bit willy-nilly. The deadline, is my understanding, I think, if Chris Myers here, I thought he was, I think it's July 15th, you said it was, so we could do a special meeting to put something on the ballot as late as that. But that only really gives, and was today, June 10th, so a little over a month, and this is a potentially 100-plus million-dollar decision, depending on which plan or combination of plans you used. It's not something to be taken lightly, it's something that needs to be done right, to avoid the lawsuits and everything you talked about, a meritorious concept, I might add. Why now? And why, I was just flabbergasted, it was so late in the game, to all of a sudden bring this up when there's already something about pensions on the ballot, so maybe you could talk about that a little bit.
Mayor, members of the council, back in the fall, or late fall, early winter, when you were entering into labor negotiations, one of the recommendations that the mayor and council made was for us to create a qualified vendor list to continue to help us on pension-related issues. In part, it was possibly to engage people to help us through the labor negotiations process. Ultimately, we were able to kind of work through the pension issues and labor negotiations process without that help, but as we began to go through the budget process, and you saw the numbers that, while we've achieved reform, again, because of some assumptions changes we had to make, and also because the reform is, you know, the savings, the bigger parts of the savings come later on in time, there was a lot of concern expressed by the mayor and council about the increased contributions that we had to make to the pension systems. And so in response to that, we engaged Buck, and the mayor and council voted to go forward with a contract with Buck, who was on that qualified vendor list, to do this kind of analysis. And so that's really why we moved forward with that, because there was continuing concern about the increasing pension costs, and not just with COPERS, there was also dialogue about can we analyze PSPRS? Why do we have a higher rate? We didn't discuss it in our presentation today, but it was in our report that, you know, the, actually, the spiking measures the mayor and council just got rid of for public safety were a primary reason why the City of Phoenix rate has, for the last number of years, been higher for PSPRS, for police and fire, than for other, for others' cities and towns. So that's, that's why we're doing this now. The other thing I would just say is the pension.
So can I just ask a question, just like this?
Did you have a chance to finish your point?
I just wanted to answer one other piece of your question, which is, we went through the pension reform task force process, and that process was an opportunity for a lot of people to bat around a lot of ideas. Not all of the ideas rose to the top, and the real focus was on what we called the boulders, the Siegel Group that helped us through that, kind of classified things into boulders and rocks and pebbles. And the task force and also the mayor and council, when we went through constructing the pension reform referendum, which was on the ballot last spring, really focused on the bigger ticket items, and didn't do everything that was possible and that was on the table. And so when there was interest in continuing to find additional savings, we went back to look at some of those rocks and those pebbles and even some of the sand. And our consultants also came up with a couple of other good ideas that we hadn't discussed before, and so really, that's why we've come forward with some additional packages today, which you can, you know, we're not recommending anything here. We just simply said, if you want to do some more reform that could achieve these kinds of goals, these are two possible packages you can consider. You can consider them now, you can consider them a year from now, or discard them completely.
So I didn't, I didn't mean, thank you, Mayor, I didn't mean to so rudely interrupt, but I just want to make sure I was clear. So this, these particular items, I think it was like five or six different distinct ones, came up in the period between, say, last fall and the time when we had our meeting, because you mentioned most, if not all of these, I can't remember exactly word for word, but in about an hour-long meeting, I think you went over pretty much most of this stuff. So it was developed then. I mean, I guess I'm curious, there was a huge pension task force a few years ago, that led to the $596 million item that was on the ballot in March of 2013. All this stuff was developed later? It's just, it's just surprising that they missed some of this at a time when they're really scrambling to come up with ideas, a lot of which was before my time on the council, so I'm speaking slightly out of turn, but I was there on the receiving end of it at the end. Is that, is that a fair statement, that these things were developed after that?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, some of these items were discussed and, by the task force, and even some of them maybe by the mayor and council, and ultimately not included in the original package, and some of these items came up later. So there's, it's a combination. So as an example, option B here, the task force did not really spend a lot of time looking at cash balance or hybrid plans. They spent time looking at a DC-only plan, defined contribution-only plan, and, and they looked at, well, the task force didn't, but the mayor and council, as you recall, analyzed putting just a strict cap on city contributions to, to COPERS.
Yeah, it's just, it's a little bit frustrating, I mean, obviously, this is complicated. I mean, I think the implication of doing this is that something will happen, something will go to the ballot. Like I said, we're in sort of the last stretch of this. If I was, let's say I was the first meeting, then it's really only been a month or so that most council members, maybe all, have been aware of this. It is just, I'm sure you understand, curious timing, you know, we've already got something on the ballot, so it confuses the issue. For me personally, I don't necessarily think every idea in here is a bad one. There might be some good ones, but I also want to see how those ideas might interact if both things pass at the ballot, if the pension reform initiative, which I'm supporting, passes, and then I support this, I want to make sure there's no poison pill if one doesn't wipe away the other. And we haven't, you know, we've discussed this before, so that question isn't a surprise, it's just, we've only got a few weeks to get those kind of answers, and frankly, given the way things are going, I would like something in writing, you know, kind of point by point, that both could pass and be fine. Now, if there's no will on the council to put something on the ballot, how much money have we wasted studying and studying stuff that apparently we're not going to do? And really, it seems like this is then a reaction, if not to the pension reform initiative being on the ballot. I frankly suspect we wouldn't be having this discussion if that weren't already on the ballot. But I think, again, I've got a stack of papers about this issue, about an inch and a half deep, so in one of these reports, I think it said our costs increased, and I'm trying to remember from the budget discussion, too, was it $5 million over last year? It was from maybe 113 million to 118 million for this coming fiscal year, is that right? So we're claiming success with what we did in March of 2013, but our costs are still going up. Now, I understand there might be reasons for that, but it's still hard to explain to the public at large how that's a great success if we're now scrambling to make up that difference with another initiative.
All right. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Councilman Gonzalez.
I appreciate it, Mayor. And I want to thank our staff and our partners for a very nice presentation. I think it was easy to, to explain, easy to follow along, and I want to thank you for all the work behind it. I want to remind the public and my colleagues on the, on the council of what we were able to pass last year, what, what the people passed last year in pension reform, $596 million over 25 years, that's the result, and let me, let me back up, I'm sorry. In the presentation, page 11, goals for pension reform, I believe those things were all followed. Create cost savings, implement best practices, attract and retain employees, which is critical. Avoid costly litigation, critical, and improve funding positions. Now, fair pension reform was passed last year, and now, over the course of 25 years, the city will save $596 million. The pension spiking reform, I guess we can call it that, the ad hoc that was put together, I was honored to, to be on that, that task force, we found an additional $233 million in savings over 25 years, so it did, so a total of $829 million. We'll call it more than $800 million is what the projection is for 25 years. So something did happen, and that's a really big number. It takes time to move forward. Our deficit that we just worked ourselves out of with the help of our residents, our employees, community leaders, business leaders, $38 million deficit, that would have been approximately $500, I'm sorry, $5 million deeper had we not passed pension reform last year. So it is working. It's moving in the right direction, it'll continue to move in the right direction. And Rick, I think you, you said it best, those are the boulders. So now, we could dig a little bit deeper. I'm glad, frankly, that you brought a couple of other options. If the council, if it's the will of this council to dig deeper, and it sounds like it is, I'm glad that you brought more options, because the pension reform initiative that is being presented, I don't know if it passes, passes this test. Frankly, I don't know if it's going to, you know, I mean, I guess it'll create cost savings, but at what point will it create cost savings? I don't know how many years that's going to take before it starts creating cost savings. How many millions or hundreds of millions of dollars would we have to spend to get to a point where we are actually creating cost savings? Unless, of course, we're just interested in breaking contracts. And I've said it a million times, the City of Phoenix is in the business of breaking contracts, I guess we should just ask, which one do we break first? We should not be in the business of breaking contracts. So either we are breaking contracts to save money immediately, or we're probably spending a couple hundred million dollars at least to get to a point where we can actually save money. Implement best practices, attract and retain employees, I don't know if we're going to do that. Avoid costly litigation, I doubt if we're going to do that. And improve funding positions. I just, you know, I think what we did last year was critically important, and not everyone loved it. Our labor organizations were not big fans of it. Not, I don't think anyone on the council was not a big fan of, and I'm speaking as the co-chair of the effort, but it was the fair thing to do, it was the right thing to do. And again, in the end, over the course of 25 years, it'll save our taxpayers more than $800 million. So if we're going to dig deeper, I do appreciate that you brought up a couple of, a couple of options that will protect taxpayers and, and our city employees and our city at large. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor? Councilman Gago, did you have something?
I guess if, Councilman, I have a motion. So if Councilman DeCecio wants to, okay.
Make a motion, please.
Excellent. So I appreciate the idea to have more debate in front of the public and more information, so I move that we direct staff to research a series of options for pension reform consistent with Option A, and bring it back to us on or before July 15th for possible referral to the ballot for November 2014.
Are there, do we have a motion on the table to explore Option A, to note that that is not to any decision to put it on the ballot, but to get additional information, potentially?
We can do an alternative motion, Mayor.
Okay, let me see if there's a second on the, on the motion. Is there a second on the motion?
A second.
We have a second on the motion. Councilman, Councilman.
Yeah, you know, there may be some things that we do like and we don't like out of each of those options. of those options. But I do believe that the public deserves to know everything and have full transparency. My motion on the table is to direct staff to go back and do a true analysis of everything that's in the initiative. And whether or not you believe that there's going to be a legal issue, just put an asterisk next to it. Quite frankly, when you're talking about legal issues, I mean, how much have we spent on the Pacholi case already? Anything can be litigated. Anything can be litigated, and any issue would be brought potentially as a problem. So, at the end of the day, you ought to have an asterisk on everything. But my motion on the table is to bring full transparency to the public before there's a direction put forward by the council, and that the public deserves to know everything. And then, they can make the determination, and then the people up here can decide whether or not they want to do X, or they want to do Y, or they want to do Z. They can make that determination on their own as to the, as to the direction. Like Councilman Waring, there might be some things I like. I believe that the public deserves full information, impartial information, and that's my motion.
Okay, so we have a substitute motion. We have a second on the, on the substitute motion.
Can I, can I say something real quick?
You may, of course.
I guess, I don't know, Councilwoman DeCiccio, it's your motion, but if that were incorporated into Councilwoman Gallego's motion, if she was amenable, I'd, I'd be okay with that.
Sure, as long as they do analysis across the board of everything.
So, I guess the important difference between our motions is that you want to add the compensation cut for employees to the motion and make sure we study that in addition-
No, I want to take in, nice, nice political move, but it doesn't work with me too well. But what I would like to do is have the public have all the information on the table, and I don't think that anybody up here should be depriving the public of that information. If you want to move yours forward, hey, why not? Let's go ahead and look at it. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, so I'm going to-
But what I'm saying is, put all information on the table, the financial information on the table of, of each of the proposals, and then let's go from there.
Okay, so I'm going to treat that as a, as a-
I get it.
-substitute motion. We have a, a second on the, on the substitute motion. I will not be supporting a substitute motion, let me explain why. Being a job of a professional city staff can be a very, very difficult job. We ask them to provide us the best information that they possibly can, that includes their best judgment in the information that they have provided. Often, they have their integrity attacked from, from this dais. I find that to be an incredibly unfortunate set of circumstances. They're not always right, but I believe that our professional city staff have integrity and haven't lacked integrity in the process, even in this very difficult process, as they do the best they can to come up with their good faith analysis as to what the economic impact would be on the city on these difficult proposals. Look, this initiative is going to be on the ballot. There's going to be a vigorous debate going on in this, in this community, on this proposed initiative. What I have asked, I think the majority of the council has asked, is for staff to give us their best judgment. And I think they've been honest about what factors they've taken into account, what they haven't taken into account, in utilizing their best judgment as to what the number would be in terms of the economic impact on the city over a 20-year period or whatever it is. And I trust that. I trust that they have given their best judgment. And I think it's really unfortunate that the insinuation really is that, that they lack integrity in the information that they brought by in this council. And that is the reason why we've, we've asked them to do a task, they've done that task for us. There'll be a vigorous public debate about, about this initiative and the cost of this initiative. But in terms of the task that we've asked our professional city staff to do, I believe they've done it appropriately.
You've just proven the point, mayor.
So, that's the reason why I will be, I will be not supporting the substitute-
Well, you've proven the point of the integrity issue just now.
Let's have Vice Mayor Waring can speak his mind, and then you can make whatever statement you want regarding the accuracy of the information, please.
At first, I, I don't think I was attacking anybody's integrity, so I hope that, that wasn't the way it was perceived. So, for this, I would be perfectly fine if you, first, I guess I'd like to see a couple things, I'll make a more specific item to this motion, to Councilwoman DeCiccio's motion, rather. I'd like to see what happens going forward from July of 2016 when these contracts expire, because I think we talked before that deferred comp would be something that could be addressed going forward after that date. I would also, you can go ahead and put in, oh, but we're not really going to save this big number that comes out of that analysis because we'd have to give it back to employees. I mean, that, that remains to be seen, though. But if you want to throw that in there, in the interest of full transparency, I'm fine with that. So, I guess that, that's something that I'd specifically like to see. I, I haven't heard anybody say that after July 1st of 2016, when new contracts, not the contracts we just voted on, but ones we voted on in the spring of 2016, take effect, I haven't heard anybody say that that wouldn't be possible. So, I'd like to see that number. I'd also like to see the number starting now, just to see what it is. I don't think that's a cut or anything, it's just like this, we're not voting on anything, we're voting on a study of something. So, if we want to limit free speech, I guess we can say, oh, you can't even mention that because I'm going to zing you politically.
Well, and then how about if we add something else onto it? Councilwoman Gates, Gallego's issue of analyzing Proposition A in more in depth to be able to move it forward.
I'm fine, I'm fine to analyze and have the numbers, we've come this far.
So, I'm going to re-amend my motion according to Councilman Waring's. I want to add that, but I also want to add in the fact that we take a look at Proposition A, because I know where the votes are going to be on that, I don't mind. I'd like to see everything on the table personally. So, my motion is now one of what I believe to be full transparency, just let everybody know everything, and then we'll go from there. And the insinuation, mayor, has to do with the fact that you can see what just occurred here. I mean, when you're telling them that you don't want to provide information, and we're talking about how we are the most transparent city, and then you're just telling them, we don't want to know that information, we don't want to put it down, we don't want to look at it, I think that sends a very bad message to the public. And I think it was wrong to say that, because I think there are those of us that really want to see transparency here, and the only way to do that is put it all on the table. So, I'm going to make, amend my motion to include all that in there. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you, councilman. I'm going to turn to Councilman Gallego and ask, do you want to accept that as an amendment? I, I took the judgment of making it a substitute motion. It's up to you whether you want to accept that as an amendment to the motion or, or not.
Substitute motion.
I just added it to my-
As a motion or no?
I think we can vote on it as a substitute motion, it seems.
Well-
Councilwoman Williams, please.
I understood that Councilwoman DeCiccio just included what she had said-
Right.
-and added on to that motion. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page before we go forward.
Would you repeat your current motion, Councilwoman DeCiccio?
The motion was to take your motion in place, then the comments that Vice Mayor Waring put in place, and then to add the fact that I want to see all the information and the true analysis, financial analysis of all of the Proposition A, B, and the initiative be done. And then, they can asterisk those items that they think could be legally challenged. Put a little asterisk next to it, I think you're going to put it on everything, because anything can be challenged at that point, but that's your choice. So, that's it.
My understanding of the, of the either substitute motion or amendment, depending on how the maker of the motion would like to take it, is that staff made certain presumptions about deferred comp, that deferred comp would, if, got, take it away through the initiative, they would still end up trying to keep, not overall reduce compensation based on the contracts. There were also some issues relative to the changing of the three-year period for termination of compensation for pension purposes to a five-year, even for existing employees. Staff did not follow that. I think the request by the councilman is to include that information, and then, so they got, even though that may not be the, ultimately, there are not, there are recommendations of what would actually occur, to at least provide that. Obviously, the gentleman from Reason tried to do an attempt to do that, or have our, our consultants look at that information to see the, whether they can, they agree or disagree with that, with that analysis. So, I think that is, my, my point was really that I think staff did the best job under very, very difficult circumstances. But if you want to accept it as a friendly or as an amendment to the motion, that's up to you.
Is that a sufficiently specific scope that staff and, under our existing consultant feels we can do it within the timeframe we have?
Mayor, members of the council, we, first of all, we've got to figure out which consultant's going to do this. But yes, I, I think we can ask for one of the firms to, if you wish to model the deferred comp reduction that's in the initiative, and model all of the benefit reductions to current employees that are in the initiative. I think we can turn that around relatively quickly in terms of providing that information to you. And then, in terms of the analysis of, further analysis of Package A that you described, I think we could also do what your, your original motion asked as well within a reasonable timeframe. The, the only cautionary note I would lay out for you is that, in terms of actually, you know, if, if the mayor and council have any interest in referring something to the ballot, that July 15th date is a hard date with the county, and, and we need time to draft ballot language and vet it very carefully, because the last thing you want to do is hastily draft ballot language. So, if there is any interest at all in referring anything to the ballot, that is, that's just the one caution I would, I would lay out for you.
And Councilwoman DeCiccio, did you want to model Option B as well?
You want to do it, why not? Let's do it. It's just plugging in numbers, I, I don't mind doing that, might as well model them all. I would like to have seen a model of all three of them compared to each other, is what I'd like to have seen. But I was helping you along, and I was going to-
All right.
-go along with you on that. But let's add Model B into it as well. And then, we can do a, a cross-the-board comparison. That's all I wanted to do.
Councilwoman Williams.
I want to ask Mr. Neymar now, are you saying the comeback at the 15th is too late? You need some meeting prior to that so that by the 15th, you had ballot language that we would vote on? I wasn't clearly understanding what you were saying.
Mayor and members of the council, if you wish, the city, we are already preparing the, to the ballot language, and we'll be, have ballot language in time for you to refer the, or to transmit to the county the ballot language for the initiative on the July 2nd council meeting or sometime at that, at that point. So, that process has begun, and that naturally occurs because you called the election. If either one of these packages, based upon our analysis, either one of these other packages, is something you wish to refer to the ballot, we do need time to develop that ballot language and have that direction to develop ballot language so that it can be vetted, and you have the opportunity to both refer it and, and, and transmit it to the county. And my only comment is, the sooner the better in terms of that direction, so that you have as much time as possible to thoroughly review that.
Vice Mayor.
I guess I would just say, to that point, we know time is a factor, but that wasn't our decision. I mean, you brought this with us kind of late in the game. You can't fault us for asking questions. You and I had discussed this, we discussed this, I discussed this with the city manager. I mean, it was natural that we weren't, just get, the way this council works, we weren't going to accept A or B and just be done with it, and that was going to be it. We're going to want more information. So, frankly, I would hope that you guys were prepared to gear up pretty quickly and try to pull something together. It's not surprising we're asking for more information. You know, we don't have a lot of time, but we do have other meetings, and I would respectfully suggest, I'm certainly willing to, to do an extra meeting if one is necessary as soon as you have the data ready. If it's before July 2nd, which, is that the next, I don't know when the next meeting would be voting on this is, but-
There's a July 24th meeting, I'm sorry, there's a July 18th meeting, which is too soon, and then there's a July 2nd meeting after that.
Okay, so if there's a meeting in between, if that would help, then that's-
Thank you, mayor, yes, June, thank you. June 18, July 2.
But June 18, you can't have it ready. So, but you might have it ready before July 2nd, which would be preferable, because you need time to draft the language. So, I would suggest that as soon as you get it done, maybe let the mayor know, and whatever mechanism we have to go through, I, I think it's three people can request a meeting, or I believe we can just set a meeting, right? That, that might be something I might want to consider, given the timeframe that you're talking about. Because I am interested and intrigued, there's actually a serious vote here, I'd like to have some information to make an intelligent decision.
Perfectly fair request that as they get the information, we will set the meetings necessary, make sure we get the accurate, and get enough, and get public testimony as well.
Where can you-
Councilman Williams, of course.
I think you're going to lose the quorum, so I'm going to call for the question.
And I would accept the friendly amendment, as a friendly amendment.
Okay, so, that's what I was asked for earlier. So, Councilwoman Gallego has accepted Councilwoman DeCiccio's proposed amendment to provide this, you know, beyond your professional analysis of what would be the most accurate information, but provide the, with the appropriate asterisk or, you know, indicated appropriately the concerns that you have. Okay.
Are you going to still oppose the full transparency part, mayor? Just kidding.
Thank you very much, councilman. I'll be, I will be supporting the motion now that she's accepted as a friendly amendment as a standalone. I wanted, I was concerned about the insinuation that the staff was sort of hiding information.
No, it wasn't the insinuation of staff at all, it was the fact that you were going to cut it off again, full transparency to the public, and now, I'm glad you're voting for it, mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much, councilman. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, we had a, what I thought was a substitute, which has been accepted as a amendment to the motion. Roll call.
Councilman DeCiccio. Councilwoman Gallego.
Yes.
Councilman Gates.
Yes.
Councilman Noakowski. Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes.
Councilman Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
I'm supporting this, but it does not mean that I'm supporting the initiative or that I'm going to vote for it when it returns to us.
Vice Mayor Waring.
Yes, but I would the same thought as what Councilwoman Williams mentioned.
Hi, mayor, I hung up by accident.
Councilman Noakowski, please.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yeah, so that, the, Councilwoman Gallego's motion passes unanimously. This meeting is now adjourned.